Thank you. So let's start the meeting. Number two, I guess. Let's establish court first.
Okay. Chair Donkey.
Present.
Vice Chair Heck. Then Commissioner Texler. Drupson, Commissioner Lu.
Here.
Commissioner Van Brice.
Here.
Commissioner Mayen. Here. Commissioner Reedon. There. Great, we have a forum.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on items not on the agenda?
Yes.
Go ahead, Gary.
Good evening, Commissioners. Always a pleasure to see you. I do have announcements from Greentown. Actually, five of them or four of them. Bear with me. Number one, I want to give you an update on 500 trees. I'm very proud and happy to report that we have planted 408, that we're on our way. And we're on a summer pause now, but we'll be back in November. And then I want to tell you about the summer internships that Greentown has. They'll be, we're doing the interviews this coming week, but we've already looked at the resumes and it is a fantastic group of young people. I couldn't be happier working with these folks. I'm looking forward to it. It'll start June 12th and end July 21st. And maybe along the way, we'll even give you some updates. There are two programs. One is going to be on Electrifying Your Home Guide. We think that there's a need for putting all this good information together and we're going to have these students work on that and create a nice guidebook for the public. And the second one is an Eating Green Cookbook. And this is going to be fun. We had a lot of applications for this one because they're going to create a vegan cookbook. And along the way, they have to create recipes, cook them, and decide what they like and put that into a nice book. So that's our summer internship program. There are a number of bike events coming up this month and Greentown is involved, of course. On Wednesday, we're going to be at Egan with their Bike to School Day events. On Saturday, we'll be leading family bike rides. And one out of North, we started the community center and the one that goes in the North Los Altos is time to be able to make a stop at the Sweet Shop. Sweet Shop. So it's always something, we'll have the blender bike there too. So we'll load the kids up with lots of good stuff. And then on Friday, May 19th, there's an event downtown sponsored by Lava and the state street markets. It's called Bike and Dine and Greentown will be there with the bike valet. And let's see, last but not least, looking ahead to to June, Summer Souls' Night Bike Ride is coming up, June 21st. So I hope to see you on that bike ride. It's always fun to go out to Bayland, watch the sunset and come back on the Stevens Peak Trail. That's it. That's my report tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Any more comments? All right. Very good. So let's move on to some of the two items for action. First, the commission minutes from the last meeting. Any of you commissioners had any edits or comments in the meeting minutes? No? Everyone wants to make a motion? Accept the minutes.
A second then.
Thank you.
Chair Donkey?
Yes.
Excellent. Yes. Commissioner Van Brice?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayen? Yes. Commissioner. The meeting minutes for people are approved.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the work plan. So we voted on the work plan last time. We made some changes working on the work plan. But I wanted us to take a look again because there were some edits made to the work plan that we voted on. So I just wanted to have a chance for us to review everything again. Surely, okay with this work plan because that's going to eventually go to the council. So do you want to point out the changes, please?
Yeah. So yeah, as Bruno mentioned, we approved the work plan, but after further review and budget meetings, staff made changes to it. So under the priority, item number three, the first priority.
Can you put it up on the?
I.
I don't think, not everybody has it.
By working?
Doing your little fashion.
It was a tree.
Yeah. All right.
So right here, should I make it bigger? This working bigger.
Yeah.
Previously, we had block power as to contract with block power. So we took it out. Like I said, there's no funding in the general plan for this and we, it doesn't mean that we can't revisit this in the future, but we just feel that there are initial tasks that staff can work on. And there are other programs coming through the pipeline. So we kind of see this school as staff working with development services to plan programs and research funding. So we wanted to bring this back to the commission to discuss and and maybe come up with an alternative specific goal that we can, you know, agree on before bringing this back to council. But that was the only change that was made. Everything else is the same as voted last year.
So a couple of ideas on this one. Supporting electrifying existing building. We have pretty much two options, right? One is block power. The other one is if it ever comes online, which it should at some point, is the tariff on bills for SBC, their pilot, which is a two-year pilot with 1,000 units for the whole SBC community. So for Los Santos, I don't know what the allocation would be and I don't know yet what the priorities would be. I'm hoping that they can come and present that to the commission, what they're ready to do it and to unveil the program. But they're still working on it. So they're not quite ready. That would be obviously free to Los Santos. But block power, you know, they don't, it's not one or the other. It's potentially both, right? So it's block power, the idea being that we would also do a pilot program for the first two years and then potentially extend it. Now there's a budget for that, obviously. And I think the estimate that we have right now is around 75K for the two-year program. So we may be able to split 75 one year and 75 the other year. So apparently there is no budget. But there's a meaning we can be, we can present it to the council and, you know, let the council decide whether it's something they want to prioritize or not. If they don't prioritize and they say, well, we don't have any budget, we don't have any way to find a budget, there are two additional options. One is we find, we try to find a grant and there are some grants out there that potentially could work for that to cover for the cost. And the second one is we work with block power to put everything in place by the end of this year to get started next year, hoping that there is a budget in next year's budget.
Well, I mean, I think the clarification would be, you know, since we're getting direction that we only want items on our work plan that have, if they have budget indications that they've been included in the budget or the CIP, then question is, how does that process work? Can we bring forward ideas, requests, whatever, when we council in May?
June?
June.
I don't know.
Whenever we're meeting. Is it, is that appropriate that we say this is what we would like? This is a budget I request item we have for next year. So that, that would be the question I would want to figure out. And then as far as grants, if that would be something that staff would be writing, that's still an allocation of resources. I don't know if we have that either for applying for grants.
We don't have a grant manager or someone who's dedicated to writing grants, so I'm guessing we will follow, you know, this would be you or Tiny or Casey, right? So it's a time, it's an allocation of time also. It's how you prioritize that, right? I mean, you know, again, you know, the process, it's still unclear at this stage, right? It's still being worked out in terms of who we're going to interact with the council and what they're going to want from the commissions. And, you know, that stuff, stuff is still being worked out and decided. So I would think that I would support the idea unless we hear something different, that we go to the council with that work plan and then explain what the work plan is about and what budget allocation there is with each ticket item. And if there is no money, there is no money, we can't do it, we can't do it, we take it out of the work, I guess.
So.
Unless we can find a grant. But then it's a resource allocation again. It's whether, how do we prioritize that?
So are you proposing that we go with this work plan or are you proposing that we add in the block power, the working with block power and then leave it up to council to decide? I wasn't sure what.
Well, I mean, my proposal would be, so what, the way we had it before, we had block power. I believe we had block power instead of to be determined, right? That's what we have. That's the only thing that's was changed, right? So so I mean, I guess the question is, do we leave it like that? And, you know, we can explain, these are the options. And this is the cost for each option. Or we could block, we still could block power in there, understanding there is no budget, but.
Yeah. And I think what we as staff are recommending is that we put something general in there. So like program planning, research funding as the goal. And then that's what we would be working on.
So without, your recommendation would be we don't contract with block power in 2023, but we do everything potentially to get ready for next year.
But this is for 23, 24, not this. So we wouldn't be able to contract with block power this fiscal year, which ends in July or June 30th. So we're saying that next fiscal year, we would, the goal would be that we do research and we do program planning and we apply for grants, research and apply for grants, which would all be on Casey and I. And we would have to also, this is not all in our purview. So we have to work with development services and see what's realistic for them. And so it'd be so we're saying like to give, the goal would be giving us that time to be able to do those things and see what comes from.
Okay.
I would support that. Without, you know, putting specifics of like a couple of questions I have one, I guess more than tied to what I was asking. So again, what is the process for requesting budget for future years? Or proposing, not requesting or proposing, you know, items that would need budget further down the line. And then the second is kind of well, related to that is do we know exactly how much budget we have for each item or is it all a budget that covers the whole work plan? Do we have a, do you have more?
We have some ideas, I think, you know, in terms of, well, not for everything for sure right now. But we pretty much know for block power, I think the urban forest management plan, we're not planning any expense other than it's an allocation of staff resources, staff allocation, right? Really, to really RFP and be ready to go. But there will be a cost allocation because we're going to need a consultant for that, but not for this budget here, I guess.
But within the items that we have on the list, like for water conservation or urban forest management, do we have a set budget that is kind of ballpark approved?
What I call the conservation is the, it's, I don't know. I mean, we don't have anything ready in the budget. Do we have something?
General question for all the for the next year. Yeah. I mean, do we have a set budget for item one, item two, item three, or is it a bulk budget that covers all the items? Yeah, those are the questions. I think like Bruno said, they're still trying to figure out how that's working with the with the commissions. And it's something that we don't have the answer to right now and we would need to get further clarification on.
I mean, the process is not clear right now. I think hopefully it's going to get clear, right? Once decisions are being made around the commissions, but, but right now in terms of how do we work with, you know, within the our priorities within the budget process, it's unclear right now. It's always been unclear, right? I mean, it's never been linked to the budget process.
And then lastly, going back to the grants, it kind of becomes a little bit of chicken and egg in terms of we don't have the budget to look at grants and apply for them, but then we don't have budget, you know, we don't get the funding from that. So is there a role that the commission can play? Is there a way we could help? Either, you know, put that on an agenda, you know, throughout the future, just discuss, you know, what are potential grants? We could propose for the city to look at, right? I don't know what it'd be.
No, I think it's a very good idea. I think, you know, we, you know, that's something we could potentially look into and help staff in that way. Not that we've got a right to grant necessarily, but I think we can probably highlight priorities. Yeah.
She just, you know, was your grant opportunities with us.
Yeah. I mean, you know, they change all the time, right? It's just an opportunity kind of. So, you know, usually they open and then you have an application timeline and then if you haven't sent your application within that timeline, then you've lost the grant, right? So I think, you know, you have to look all the time, be opportunistic in many ways. Otherwise, in terms of budget, CCS, for example, there is a budget for CCS, which is pretty clear, but it's not a very big budget. So I'm hoping we can find some money for that, if that's what we want to do. Then the fleet electrification planning. You know, the hope is that we can do most of it internally, but I don't know if we're going to need to engage with a consultant for that at some.
Going to be heavily relying on it to get correct.
The energy audit, that's, that's covered by BRN Technical Assistance Program. So that's not an issue. And then some of the items that are the emergency management resilience and transportation, which are not prioritized right now. It's kind of still a question, right? If you go.
So we, we discussed this, went through this last time. We have one small change which I'm fine with the wording as is in terms of process with, you know, how we find, find or get plan for funding. I think there's a little ambiguity and we're just going to need to flush that as we go along. I think that action I was are, are for me. Find what they, they are now.
Okay. Yeah. And I think if we leak it, at least, I mean, I think it's easier for us to look potentially grant opportunities if we have that listing followed us. So, I mean, we can. So that, that would have us from that standpoint as well. Okay. So we good with the changes in general? Do we need to vote on that? Yes. Let's make a motion.
For this, oh, yeah.
Look like that. So are we going to leave it to be, to be determined or?
This is what we're proposing.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah.
That we accept this work plan?
Not just the charge to the work.
To the work plan. For the 2023, 2024 fiscal year.
So she, yes. She now made a motion to approve the work plan with the change, the proposed change on item. What's priority number three? Three, yeah. And then it's seconded by. But it's. Right. Okay. Do we have David Gerson on line?
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you. Hi, David.
Hello, my friend. Good to see you again.
Can we see him on the video?
Good to see us, but we can't see.
Yeah.
Oh, my video. Sorry about that.
There you are. Okay. So David, David Gerson is the CEO of the Empowerment Institute, is the architect behind the climate Moonshot, the Moonshot Climate Action Plan is also behind Cool Blocks and Cool Neighborhoods and the Cool City Challenge. And been talking on and off with David about Cool Blocks and Cool Neighborhoods and that, how that could potentially add to Cool City Challenge and how that could potentially help us in Los Santos. So I wanted David to come and make a presentation to the commission that have a set of questions and discussion on what, what is doing.
Okay. Well, it's been interesting to learn about your process. So thank you for letting me in on it. I guess anyone can get in on it, but I got in done in particular since I am exploring relationships. So it's insightful. So let me share my slides. And then we can walk you through these slides. So perchance, have you all spent any time with any of the things that were sent to you, Moonshot Climate Action Plan? Or am I assuming that you don't have any insight already?
Yes.
So there is some insight.
Okay, okay. All right. So let me walk you through the slides and then we can have a conversation. So we've been doing this for some time now in a number of cities, which I'll tell you more about. Our goal is to create carbon neutral cities by 2030. We call it a climate moonshot scaling strategy. My organization, Empowerment Institute, is the entity behind it. And we've been doing this work for several decades now. So big picture, we see the climate challenge as a time challenge, not a solution challenge, but a time challenge. The solutions are out there. So the question is, how do we move this process along of creating carbon neutral cities fast enough to have impact and then be able to scale it? And so that's the exploration that we have been having now for several years with our plan. And as we looked at the question, where is the carbon getting emitted from? You must know this, but if you don't, you now do. That 70% of the carbon emitted on the planet comes from cities. And less known is that 70% of that comes from our lifestyle choices, the citizenry of a community. So that is a big deal because it tells us where to focus. And their solutions are out there. The question is how to get them all to work in a meaningful way. So there are many top-down solutions. You guys hang out a lot in that space, policy, technology, creating new markets. And they have been successful, but they are not sufficient to achieve substantial carbon emissions by themselves. And then you have bottom-up solutions, the world that I've lived in for some time, have also had success, but they're also not sufficient to achieve substantial carbon reductions, certainly not in the timeframes that we need. So we have begun to play with a, shall we say, a thesis, which is that if you combine top-down and bottom-up together, which are not normally done, you have the potential for a breakthrough because you're now working at a whole system level. We've also learned, and we've been practicing this and seeing it in play, is that the way you can activate the whole system is through the bottom-up, through behavioral change, if you will, the demand side, which puts a lot of power in the hands of the people who live in a community and a city to activate them. Because this is a way to really get the kind of change in the timeframe that's required. So the question then is, how do we empower citizens to change their behavior? This is the world of the cool block, our world, at least of the cool block. We empowerment institute have been doing this work now for four decades. Our core competencies, our behavioral change and social change, particularly what we call transformative social change. We work with many millions of people in hundreds of cities around the world over this time. And the simple definition of what we do is we enable people to envision and create what they want in their lives and their world, in this case, their households and their blocks, and ultimately their city and beyond. If they see the power of a city to be a model to other cities. The program is built around these elements. There is a block leader, someone shows up and says, yes, I want to organize my block. They reach out to their neighbors and they get a team of five to eight households together. They meet nine times bi-weekly over four and a half months. In between meetings, they take actions. The topics that they work on are disaster resiliency, carbon reduction, water stewardship, neighborhood livability, and then empowering others. We've developed 120, what we call action recipes. They're not checklist per se. They are actual recipes that take you through step by step on how to take that action. Checklist by themselves do not actually get people to change behavior. Knowing something is not the same as knowing how to do it. There's a peer support system of their neighbors, their self-directed meeting guides that allow the team to run through this on their own with some coaching by us and/or other, or volunteers who come out of prior teams. There's a mobile web platform and we integrate local resources that connect with local government agencies and also local nonprofits. So the question that we have spent a lot of time, once we had a platform and a program, was how do, how do we get people to participate? Why would people join? And what we found over time were there were three core reasons. People were seeking greater meaning in their life. I want to create a better world for my children. They wanted to get to know their neighbors. They lived on this block for some time and they don't know their neighbors, they don't know them well. And they feel that's a quality of life deficiency, even though they haven't considered it as a possibility until we show up. And then there's agency. I want to make a difference. So those we found, we call them intrinsic motivators to be the drivers to get people to participate. This is what we've done over since probably 19, excuse me, 2017. We've worked with these eight cities, many of them you know well, Mountain View and Palo Alto and Palomar in Europe, part of the world. 325 cool blocks, 5,000 plus participants. On average, they reduce their footprint 31%. That's self-reported based on our platform. They take on average 25 actions. And the way that this thing really sort of has magic, if you will, is that neighbors want to get to know each other. So when a neighbor knocks on their door, they're interested to hear more about it and they come to an information meeting. And on average, that process generates 45% participation in the program, some places higher, but on average 45%. So we have the elements. That does not make a carbon neutral city. It makes a effective program. But it is a foundation for the next. But it is a foundation for the next parts of my presentation. Which really now have to focus on time. You guys have a twenty thirty five goal, which is aggressive. And by. Let's say European standards, it's not, but it by California standards, it's reasonably aggressive. There are many cities that are going for twenty thirty, which is our. Goal, which is to see if we can move it along faster. And if we were to work together. Have that conversation about maybe accelerating your timeline. But that's a larger conversation and you know there are other cities in California with that goal, probably another. Six or seven. So that's in play. The question then becomes, how do you speed up time? And there are three different strategies to work with. We call the science of tipping points because it's all about tipping points. We've got to figure out. Get a lot of leverage and this is how you get some of that leverage if you're going to get the change we want in the timeframe. So some of you may know diffusion of innovation. This comes right out of a lot of the work that's done in Silicon Valley around. Early adopters for technologies, but it also applies to social innovations. And the goal is to target those who are most receptive, the early adopters, and at a certain point we cross the chasm and we start to tip. Uh, and and that's the the heart of our strategy and we found that quite effective. Because the early adopters naturally show up. They want to be cool block leaders and they show up in other ways. And so. Uh, that's one piece of the tipping strategy. You focus on the people who are most receptive and then you get them engaged and then they. Are the choir and they preach, if you will, to the church. Another part of our tipping point strategies is known as cyclogenesis, the study of hurricanes and how. Hurricanes start in small vortices and then they magnify. So. What we have seen with cool blocks and other initiatives that we've done is that these small vortices, let's see this. Let's say this person in red is the cool block leader reaches out to their neighbors. And before you know it, you have cool blocks connecting with other cool blocks and something starts to get magnified with momentum. And tha- that is another key part of the strategy. And at a certain point in time, you you actually can take off. It can move rather quickly. Uh, when I spoke to Bruno, we concluded that there are a number of systems, conditions that need to be in place to be determined if. Those are in place in Los Altos, but if you have them, you have the potential for this to move rather rapidly. Third is what we call punctuate equilibrium, which comes out of evolutionary biology, which is how stable systems rapidly transform. When there is an extinction um threat that forces the system to evolve. And move to a new state. We are now finding ourselves in such a state. And um, what is required to activate it is the intelligence, creativity and will. Of a community. So one of the things that is being. Activated through this is those three ingredients because now you have. What we call social creativity to create solutions that you can't imagine when your only. Parameters are city budgets that you have constraint over spending money on and limited staff time. And local governments constraints around ordinances and incentives as your tools. So lots can happen when you now have this X factor released. There have been stories of rapid change, getting a person on the moon. The moonshot is certainly our metaphor. Winning a war and we think that the cool block in the context and cool neighborhood and the carbon neutral city. Uh, model or Moonshot Climate Action Plan model. Could be able to produce this. No guarantee this is a moonshot. Means that there's no sense that this is a done deal by any means, nor is, you know, climate. Solutions, any done deals, but we think it is possible based on our research and based on this strategy. And based on what we've seen so far work. So how does it work where it starts to move and the scaling process begins? It begins at the scale of a block. And what you'll start to see is it's not just a block, but we're building what we call climate action capacity. So. Your thirty thousand plus residents are being activated through this process. And as we build more capacity, we can do more things. And then we move to the cool neighborhood, which is the a key organizing principle for carbon neutral neighborhoods. I'll say more about that later. And you're seeing the the early adopters continue to evolve into the next level and then you have. Cool districts, which are ten cool neighborhoods, cool neighborhood is eight adjacent cool blocks. And then you move into a cool city and a cool city, uh, you know, is hard to define, but we consider the. The tipping point for there to be four hundred cool blocks. At that point, you have about ten thousand people. Um, engaged in some form or other. And you can start to have, you know, real traction. In your case, that's a huge amount of the city. So uh, we could probably do it with a lot less than that in a smaller city, but that's the kind of the the overall. Uh, metric we work from. And then you can move it to a regional level, let's say, you know, Santa Clara County or whatever. And then a state level. We've had some conversations with Gavin Newsom and his team. They are responsive to this. Program with the right next steps. I think they, there's opportunities there. So how does it actually work very practically? Let's take transit, which I'm assuming is one of your key issues, as it is in most cities. Um, so. People go through the cool block and they start walking more, biking more and sharing rides and switching EVs and using public transit to the extent there is. Public transit, which in turn creates demand for new top down policies like sidewalks and car free zones. Charging, all these things I think are causing. You to have to spend monies, which I see is a tough one, but in any event, it will create demand, which also creates a value proposition for a city council. And then. Investments start to be made and then drives more behavioral change and that virtuous spiral. That's the process of how this works practically. Uh, starting with demand. And then you start finding some other things happening when you start to change, at least in the transportation system. Um, and you have fewer car trips, you need less parking, you need have opportunities for more public. Um, for more housing, public spaces, parks, higher density. So a lot of things start to happen and then we find that we are activating a whole system. Because they're interwoven. And so all kinds of opportunities, it requires a very. You know, you need a city manager or mayor or city council and you guys as active advisors of that entity. To see whole whole systems. It's hard to just operate in silos, which of course is. One of the challenges of cities is that that's how they tend to organize themselves. So moving this forward into a carbon neutral city, um, we see the process then of a cool block. Evolving into a cool neighborhood. Evolving into a carbon neutral neighborhood. We have not moved from cool blocks to cool neighborhoods. So that is our next place of growth. And we have not moved from cool neighbors into carbon neutral neighborhoods. That's our next level of growth. Um, but that is the transition. That is the heart of the Moonshot Climate Action Plan. Cool blocks. Moving to the next level of cool neighborhood of eight adjacent cool blocks approximately. And then carbon neutral neighborhoods, which is getting that neighborhood to actually become a carbon neutral neighborhood. So another thing that happens through this is that we build greater trust and community cohesion and what we call second order change or transformative. Social change leadership capacity, which will be necessary to drive cool neighborhoods and carbon neutral cities and ultimately a cool city. Right now, the onus is essentially on you, this group. And the city council and the city agencies that are and your two staff. But with this capability, you now. Have a much wider community of uh, of interest who can further this. So from our point of view, in order to empower people, you need these ingredients. You need a vision that's compelling enough. Which is a carbon neutral city by a timeframe that can have real impact on the planet and enable a city to be a a leader. Uh, among cities across the planet. We have innovation driven by necessity and extinction level threat forcing us to get out of the. Normal ways we do things as individuals or cities. Um, and I D whose time has come. The idea actually has two components. One is that we can actually create a carbon neutral city by twenty thirty. And the other idea is that if enough cities do it, we have a future, a real quality opportunity for impacting climate. And for us, really, when you can empower people from the bottom, you have, you know, people power. Which without, it's hard to imagine getting these kinds of outcomes. And and then we inculcate these four ideas, um, which is essential to get speed of change and. Scale and and that's audacity, the willingness to have a big idea, putting it out there and encouraging people to believe in a new possibility. That they might not normally go towards. The sense of abundance, how do you, it's hard to do this on small little bits of money, so attracting enough resources, have enough staffing. Um, and and that mentality of can do. Uh, alchemy, which is really the whole system approach and. And the agency, the getting people to really be empowered, to believe in themselves and their community and their city. And the city to believe in their citizenry. So a lot of different types of agency. We've chosen California, although we're now moving also to Europe because it has all of the right early adopter characteristics. Around climate, certainly in the United States. I think it's the thought leader. There's no place where there's more cities going after carbon neutrality by twenty thirty or twenty thirty five than California in my. Research. And our scaling mechanism is what we call the Cool City Challenge Moonshot Climate Action Plan, which is this fifteen page document. That was sent to you that details out our theory of change and our whole approach. Uh, this is more the scaling strategy. That's a little bit more. Um, the operational strategy. So um, the roadmap that we're working with is cool blocks, the cool neighbors, carbon neutral neighborhoods, which we've talked about. That's seventy percent on average of a city's footprint. And then the way we want to work with the business sector is cool blocks and cool neighbors create an economic driver. So again, the man's side and social pressure for cognitive businesses. Now, there can be also roles played by the city to activate that. As I said, we've had some good conversations with Governor Gavin Newsom and and his team. And he has been a big fan of this model, which is nice to have him uh, on our side. This is our timeline. We completed our pilot last year in three California cities that her goal then was to provide some. Funding that we had raised to test out our scaling systems. And now we're in the demonstration phase, which is develop three city partnerships so that we can really now. And we also built that Moonshot Climate Action Plan last year in these learning from all of the different experiences we were having. So now we want to test that. We're in conversation with a number of cities and so that's what we're looking for by this year. And then our scaling phase is to do a hundred partnerships with up to a hundred cities between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty six. These are all the elements that we see in place that we've talked about. Um, our vision is to get. Carbon neutral cities across California, across America, across the planet by twenty thirty. We want to keep pushing on California to see if it can speed up its timeline to twenty thirty five. We're working with the science rather than the politics with these numbers. And and even that science was saying that it not be fast enough, but. We feel that what we're doing, which is designed to speed up change, free exchange. Um, can start to get us where we need to get to by having these hundred cities model the process. Just as a afterthought here, um, we are representing twelve of the SDGs through our program. So it's also has a lot of global impact as cities do this work. So let me just end with a quote. From Real Gay, one of my favorite poets and sort of philosophers. Again and again in history, some people wake up, they have no ground in the crowd. And they move to broader, deeper laws. They carry strange customs with them and demand room for bold and audacious action. The fut- future speaks ruthlessly through them. They change the world. So we are looking for those people in those cities and they're there. And so let us talk about. Your questions. If you have any.
Thank you, David. So just a process reminder, we're gonna have a set of. The commissioners ask questions to David and then we'll take public comments and then we can come back for discussion. So. And open the floor to the commissioners to ask questions for the, if you have any questions for David.
Yeah, go ahead. Are the neighborhoods this only residential or are you also dealing with a business neighborhood stand? Or even apartment building? Are there, you have, do you have communities of apartment building like landowners uh, in that sense?
It's residential, but it can be apartment dwelling and we call those vertical blocks. But yes, so those can be cool neighborhoods by certainly cool blocks, but they can also be cool neighborhoods. We don't tend to work in business districts as such because our strategy is really residential.
Uh, what I just heard, I think there are three cities, Los Angeles. Petaluma, Irvine, uh, last year participating in your pilot program. They are very different, right? Petaluma is more very countryside, you know. People race organic chicken farms. Los Angeles, huge. Uh, yeah, Irvine, I would say is very, uh, very community, you know, they have a university and stuff like. So it's very, very different community. I'm very curious is that in this pilot program. How long does it take for them really uh, to be engaged? And then what percentage? Or I I may ask is that how many this kind of neighborhood block have resulted from? Each one of this. I I'm curious.
Yes, that's a good question.
I know it's only pilot, but I just wanted.
They're just one of our, so they were one version of our pilot, our first and most deepest pilot in terms of our learning curve was Palo Alto. Um, so it wasn't only the those three cities, but those cities we were looking to learn. So our, just to give you a little of our history, we worked first in Palo Alto. And then we moved to, um, well, actually, our first three cities were Palo Alto, San Francisco and Los Angeles in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And the other was to do proof of concept. Does this cool block idea work? Is it resonant for people and? Do we, can we get enough uptake? And when we found that we, and we worked with about a hundred blocks over that course of time across um, these other five cities. One of which actually we worked with again in Los Angeles. We put out an application and those three cities were the ones we selected based on that. And the goal was to see if they could start to get some of the scaling energy we were looking for. And Petaluma did quite well. They had. Hundred and twenty five blocks in approximately a year. They, LA did not do as well. Irvine got about seventy five blocks in about a year, so reasonably good. They were the biggest numbers that we had. We provided resources. They had gotten some funding, so that enabled it to go to a level. But it wasn't as simple as just having resources. You had to have the right community and the right organizers. And sometimes you get the right community and not the right organizers. Sometimes you get the right organizers and not the right community. So a lot of factors. This is not, what I want to not do is talk you into this by any stretch of the imagination. It's hard to do. Uh, behavioral change is hard, community organizing is hard. Uh, and when it's working at its best, it's a partnership with the city. Where the city is doing a lot of the heavy lifting to utilize its networks to engage. All its different partner organizations and playing a major role. We do not come into a city as a. Uh, consultant, we come in as a partner. And so when we see the right ingredients are in place for partnership, you know, then we move forward because it's it's a demanding journey. It's a multi-year journey to get there. So it needs to be the right fit for the city and for us. But to your point, yes, very different cities, very different outcomes. I would say. From our work in Palo Alto, which is the closest to you guys. You are kind of in the sweet, the sweet spot of this program because you have. Kind of more or less traditional blocks. I mean, you have your multifamily dwellings as well. But people in those kinds of more suburban like environments tend to want to get to know their neighbors. They feel connected to the neighbor. They've got. They feel connected to the neighbor. They've got equity in their house and they don't have a mechanism to do that and they have the values. So you have the right ingredients, I would say, if the political will is there and all the other ingredients. I answered more than you asked for, but build a bigger context for you.
I have a couple of questions. You, um, the thirty-one percent number you uh mentioned for, you know, the production and uh in carbon reduction for household, is that over a period of time? Is that, how does that come about? How long do these?
The, the process is extrapolated over a year, but it is done over a four-month timeframe. And when households start the process, they do a carbon footprint assessment. Um, and then they, the way the, that that part of the program, there's two topic areas on that is organized, is that each action has an associated carbon reduction number. It's an extrapolation. And uh, if you take that action, and sometimes there's some subtleties depending upon what you do, you get a certain amount of CO2 credit for that. When you add that up, that's how you get it. And on average, uh, households are reducing their footprint by thirty-one percent. It's not that hard if people choose to engage because our footprints are pretty high here. It's harder in Europe where we do a lot of our work because their footprints are smaller. So I mean, thirty-one percent is a big number compared to almost anything else out there that I am aware of in terms of getting carbon reduction. But but that's how we do it.
And then is there, what's kind of the progression to get to carbon neutral? Um, thirty-one percent, I'm assuming some of that is, you know, low hanging fruit, some of that is getting the little change in behavior, but what do you think uh would be the progression?
Well, that's a great question and I don't have all the answers. I have a few of the answers and more questions than answers. Because we've not done that yet. But what I can say is that um, thirty-one percent generally demands some system changes, not just the easy stuff. It demands green power. I think you guys have green power. Or I think, do you have green power?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, so that gets easier for people. Generally, diet change is another piece. There's some, you know, there's some what you call low hanging fruit. It may or may not be easy for people for their lifestyle choices, but there's some easier things to do. We have seen some households go much deeper, they're rarer. How do we get to carbon neutrality from that? From our point of view, the next step, which is why we're moving to cool neighborhoods, is to start building carbon neutral neighborhoods where we can get the infrastructure right. And we can get the early adopters now talking to each other and looking for things that will enable them to get there. But that's the experiment. We don't have the answer to that. Certainly, some of the city policies are going to be essential. I mean, whatever you guys can do, and I'm sure you're probably studying the best practices that are out there, you know, reach codes and all those other things. So all those things are like, do we say expected of cities now, certainly progressive cities, but that doesn't get us there either by itself. Transportation's a big piece. So what we, what we look to do is to partner with cities and to start asking really profound and very granular questions on how to build these carbon neutral neighborhoods out of the cool neighborhoods. The cool neighborhood, by the way, isn't, start with carbon neutrality. It starts with a resilient neighborhood, then a car, then it starts to a regenerative neighborhood. So there's a lot of value in getting these neighborhoods to be like that. And then the last step is the carbon neutral neighborhood, which also requires some funding. And this is a place where we would be willing to partner on finding resources to support some of the infrastructure uh, um, expenses that will be required. Um, so you know, that's another place because we, we see that as as essential and it, and it will cost money and and that money needs to be found. And certainly not to cover necessarily infrastructure to start with, but at least startup fundings to get these carbon neutral neighbors in play. So if you read the Moonshot Climate Action Plan, I discussed that a little bit.
Uh, one of your slides uh says that in twenty twenty-three, you're looking for three demonstration plants or or for it. Three demonstration cities, I guess, then to to do some demonstrating. And you've talked about the pilots that you won previously, have run previously. And the question that I have is, is how many of those pilot cities are knocking on your door to be in the demonstration phase?
None are knocking on our door or are we knocking on their door? Um, we learned the things that we needed to learn. We felt that those cities had a lot of value, but they weren't really what we felt were going to get us to the next level for different reasons. That's a much deeper conversation, one I'd rather not publicize because, you know, there's a lot of different reasons for it. But none of those cities are. Where we're finding the most interest actually is Europe. Um, and so we're having very deep conversations with Copenhagen and some other cities in Europe um, who are actually on the twenty thirty timeline. There's a lot more resourcing there as well. Uh, one thing that the state of California does not seem to have figured out is the importance of cities in terms of their carbon neutrality, whereas the EU has. They realize if we're gonna get anywhere close to the goals, we've got to drive it through cities. That's not the case necessarily in California, albeit I'm not unwilling to continue to work in California. But I didn't see those, what I call, systems conditions in places. I wasn't necessarily looking for them. I was really just looking to see how far we could take cool blocks, but then for the next step, we need other ingredients. It's not easy. And so, you know, we, we are looking to find the right places as opposed to just places. You know, moonshot mentality is not normally out there very much in cities. So it's not, I've told Bruno, I said, you know, not easy, but climate is not easy. So you need to find the right places and the right people.
The other, I'll make one other comment. The other thing about moonshots, especially the two examples that uh you give by the put a man on the moon and win a war effort. Um, lots of money and organization on governmental behind those types of moonshots and and this is really more grassroots to begin with. And so you know, I, I echo yours. It's a real hard push without that type of um governmental and not only governmental uh push, but also the funding push.
I would say yes to that. I would also say, in my experience, having done some moonshots, is that money follows. The money follows the plan, money follows the team, money follows. When those ingredients are in place and you have something of real substance, money will follow. That's my belief. So while, while we might not have those resources initially, those resources I think can be attracted if the other ingredients are in place. And that's why, you know, we're looking for the right places. I know where some of that money is. But unless you have all the right, what I call, systems conditions, um, you know, that money is not going to just get put into a place because they have set a goal or they have some aspiration. And and I'm, I'm very precise with what it's required. And the thing that I said to Bruno is we need, we would need a hundred percent partnership with any city we work with. They would have to be helping recruit the people. They'd have to put all of their input or everything behind it. So you'd have to convince your city council that this was a priority. And the political will would have to be there and that doesn't guarantee it. But if that's there, we can move along rather rapidly. And then it's not hard. I mean, it's not a lot of money, actually, this initial money at least, because it's just staffing. It's one point five staffing to start with. For a city the size of Los Altos, you know, you can move along pretty well with one, one FTE, one point five FTE and a real strong partnership with the city, local, you know, local um, government employees who are in charge of this area. But again, I don't want to over, overstate it, you know, it's hard, but we would need the city to be one hundred percent there. And that's the question that, you know, you would have to ask and be comfortable with before you and ask them to join, you know, to make sure they're really ready to show up in that way.
So I, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions uh more in terms of where you are in the process and you mentioned that already. So this year, you're trying to sign up three cities to move the concept from cool blocks to cool neighborhoods, right?
The cool neighborhoods and the moonshot climate action plan, yes.
So, and then it would, you have to test the concept of the cool neighborhoods. Can you get there, right? Because it's not just putting a few cool blocks together, it's, it's building an infrastructure around that neighborhood to be able to go to the next step, correct?
Correct.
Right. So and then from, from those cool neighborhoods, then you have your cool city and whatever.
And from those, from those cool neighborhoods, really, the truth is the proof of concept is a carbon neutral neighborhood. So if we were to work together, one of the places we would want to go is starting with the notion of a carbon neutral neighborhood. Starting with the end in mind, you know, what is it we're trying to go for? And to see who might be ready to go there. So for example, I've identified cool neighborhood leaders who are very excited to crack the code of a carbon neutral neighborhood. Uh, a few of them are in, you know, different California cities, some European cities. So right from the beginning, they want to go to carbon neutral neighborhoods, but they have to work their way there. But that's what motivated them because that's, if you will, it's not quite the moonshot, but you might call it if you follow the, the NASA lore, you know, it's like getting someone off into space and maybe circling the moon. They're not quite on the moon yet. But these are some of the key ingredients. And so we'd be looking for who wants to play that role. I mean, one of the value propositions a city would have that would give us confidence is qualified uh, cool neighborhood leaders who really want to go the distance to get a cognitive neighborhood. Because we would need to work very closely with them. Uh, and then it, and those experiments would take place. So one of the things we're going for this year, whether or not we get cities to sign up for the Moonshot Climate Action Plan, is the cool neighborhood piece, which would be stepping stone to the, to the larger, you know, effort of getting multiple cool neighborhoods and AKA carbon neutral neighborhoods.
Alright, so the other question you mentioned, you know, one that have, one and a half staff would probably be enough to get started in Los Altos. You know, they would be kind of like community organizers, I would say. I mean, that's.
They would be community organizers, it's either one full-time and a half-time or three half-time people. That's how we've seen it work, yeah.
Right. And then what's, what's your role as an organization? I mean, other than providing the platform.
Our, our role, yeah, our role is to be a full partner, um, so training, coaching, strategy. Those are the primary things, funding, where, when, when we're ready for that, supporting the funding process. Um, really testing the tools, the cool neighborhood tools. I mean, we would, we would be, this would be a joint venture. This would be a joint venture. You guys would need to come up with the funding to get this thing rolling. Once that was rolling, then we would look to bring resources in for some of the cool neighborhood infrastructure and seed capital. And then potentially even, you know, longer term funding to cover our time and the city's time and whatever. Once we got into the funding mode, but you would have to do the initial investment for us to feel like you were serious. Um, but once that was there, then we're teammates and we're looking to get the resources together that we would need. Albeit, the one point five can last us a while because it's going to take us a few years to get momentum.
Any other questions? Okay, so um, if there are any comments from the public, we can take public comments now. And yeah, in case you have anybody interested in making a comment. Alright, so I'll bring it back to the commission. Any more questions, any more thoughts, ideas?
I can, I can ask you some questions also, once you're finished asking me some questions, but yes.
So, this isn't a discussion item, so it isn't informational, I know. So it would just be questions.
Yeah, it's got clarification, that's all.
Clarifications, yes.
Yeah, so I'm curious about if there is a scenario where a neighborhood on their own could contact you and there could be some, you have some version of your platform for that. And separately, it's a question about sort of the purpose of that funding, like the, just as a very pointed example. Would you need that tremendous funding to help a specific uh cool block get pay for their water heater conversion, like that type of deal? Or is, what is an example of like a, a, an end goal that?
Well, the starting, the starting point is seed capital for a cool uh neighborhood to evolve into a carbon neutral neighbor based on a proposal, an RFP. It'd be small amounts of money, but it gives them some startup capital to get this thing rolling because it's a big idea. Um, we haven't found that they need a lot of money, but it just helps them get started. Beyond that, the next step is, once they have their carbon neutral plan, then there'll be infrastructure costs, at which point then we would be looking at infrastructure potential investments. That's another kind of fund that we want to put together for cities um, and for neighborhoods. But our whole model is infrastructure based in specific geographic locations rather than infrastructure across a whole city. That's a different, that's more capital expenditures of a city. This is more, you know, the, the bottom-up model. Albeit, you know, once you start to partner, you never know where it'll go. But I have conversations going on with infrastructure funding types who are, there's a lot of money that wants to be spent. It just doesn't know how to be spent very wisely. So they're very intrigued. I have a conversation on Thursday with a group that has been developing a whole set of green bank scenarios for this kind of thing, not this kind of thing explicitly, but how do you, how do you really finance climate effectively? Because it's not going to come out of government grants, not going to come out of general fund, it's got to come out of some other source. And that other source has to be activated by seeing a real plan that ultimately can benefit, I might add, some of the supply side technologies providers that want to actually see this kind of stuff get traction. Cities are the natural, if cities and all that can be pieced together. So we're very much in the climate financing space. Um, that's part of our R and D right now, you know, how to do this, because I don't know how it gets done on the kind of budgets and the kind, you know, I just heard your conversation. I know what cities struggle with to make small amounts of money go one way. And how are you going to get a carbon neutral city, which is, costs money? Unless there can be a strategy and enough resources and enough capacity to make it happen. We, we recognize that's going to be needed.
Another clear comment. You're still running cool blocks as well, like the, the um commitment and the let for that is this much lower barrier in terms of we had new cool blocks that we're, blocks that we're interested in signing up, that's a lower level commitment.
Cool blocks can, there's different ways cool blocks can work, yes. They can use our platform. There's a small fee for using the platform. Don't get much from us, but they get some basic support that's online. If cool blocks, if you guys were wanting to do cool blocks, what you'd want to do is to get some basic support so that your cool blocks have the best chance of having the best result. Because they're going to be your early adopters and they're going to help tell the story. So if there were, yes, minimumly, if nothing ever happened from this conversation, cool blocks will always be available. Um, it's just more of a service. It's not really our strategy, but you know, we, we want to be of service to people that care enough to do that. So that, that'll always be available.
So you're really coming in in terms of the partnership at the neighborhood, the cool neighborhoods space, right, in some ways?
The cool neighborhood and the cool city space, the cognitive city. And then cool neighborhood is less interesting to us unless there is a desire to go all the distance into carbon neutral city. Because if you get a cool Because if you get a cool neighborhood, I mean, yes, we're still interested in that, and we have a few places. That are very interested in just piloting cool neighborhoods. But they aren't really the conversations that we're most interested in. We are interested in that just for the learning curve. But the, the more important dynamic is how you, how you craft, how you crack the code of a cool neighborhood, a carbon neutral neighborhood, and how you then scale that. That's going to take time and effort. You know, I mean, the biggest question I think we all would need to think about is. How would this work over time? You know, what's the political appetite for this? What's the political will available? You know, where are the resources? There are companies. I mean, we have a, for example, a very large. Grand proposal, multimillion dollar grand proposal to Google. Or our cool neighborhood simulator, which is AI based and all kinds of cool. Features, AR and VR and what have you. So there's money for some of those kinds of elements out there. I mean, the money's out there if you have the right. Vision and the right demonstration of leadership capacity and the right political will, I believe. So my question for you, if I may, is how would you characterize? Leadership and political will? I mean, how would you characterize Los Altos? I've gotten a taste from Bruno. He's a good exemplar. He gave me confidence that if he's around, that's a good sign. But that isn't the same as political will. And it isn't the same as political appetite. Or something like this in Los Altos. You know, what would be your, your take of your city? How would you characterize it? I will not hold it against you if it's not hundred percent, you know, glowing.
It's a, it's a, it's a tough one to answer, but I think, you know. The fact that we have a climate action plan that's been approved by the council. Is a good indication of the political willingness and, and, and the political will to do something about it in the, in the reasonable timeframe. Might not be two thousand thirty. But suddenly there is, there is this commitment from the city and from the city leadership. So I think. I don't think there is much doubt about it, you know, what we've been. You know, it, it's what you're proposing is actually an interesting way of looking at it. It's, you know, it's not something that was in our climate action plan. We didn't necessarily know about it, but. You know. The reason why you here talking to the commission is because I think you can, you, you, you. You represent something that could be great for us potentially, so to get us to a point, to get us to two thousand thirty five, even earlier and can be carbon neutral by then, so. That's what I, I wanted to have that discussion and that mother, that discussion, but. The presentation that the commission, so that's something we can. Discuss among us internally and then, and then obviously potentially discuss with the count, talk to the council about. Any other? Comments? You don't have to be that great.
Clarifying question.
Yeah, definitely.
So the, the cool city is a minimum of four hundred? Cool blocks?
Normally, that's the number that we look to get, and what we look to get, again, what we tried to do. When we did our pilot last year, we'd see if we can get two hundred in the first year. Two hundred cool boss, we got a hundred and twenty five, so we saw that we could get that kind of traction. So the idea, if we had the right. Shall we say? Partnership level, so just example. Do you know how many partnerships the city has in its various agencies and in general with businesses and local nonprofits and? You know, whatever. I mean, a- any sense of how many institutional partners this city has? So, let me, let me. So let, let me, let me build a, let me help build some of the, the, the elements. So what we would want to have is the. Excitement from the nonprofits. This excitement from the city agencies. The excitement from the city council. The excitement from the thought leadership, the civic leadership. This becomes the. Organizing. Principle for Los Altos for the next period of time. And everyone says yes. You become. Bonded around that yes. When you get that. It doesn't become hard to get cool block leaders because everyone sees this as the thing, because we're going for a moonshot. We want to win a war or whatever word you want, metaphor you want to work. With that. And anything can happen. Also, you also have all these people in your city who say, wow, I know this funding source and I know that funding source. Now they're on your team. Now they're looking and saying, my company could bring in this much money or that much money. Let's get creative. So when you've activated a community at that level. These four hundred do not become. Big things. When you have, when you're starting from a standing start, they seem a lot. So what would be required is to be able to get that kind of mobilization in place. And, and, and with that, we've not seen that yet, so I don't want to say it's easy. We tried it in Palo Alto. We couldn't get there. The city government was just more or less sitting on the sidelines. They loved the idea. It was a great thing. Citizenry loved it. Couldn't get them. They weren't quite ready to go, even though we had a great. Partnership with the city manager and not even blaming Palo Alto as such. We maybe weren't even ready to know how to. Kind of mobilize the city at that point. We had too many other things to learn. But we do know how to do that now. We do appreciate what that would look like now. So that's what I'm really talking about. When, with the city as really a driving force. Not how it normally operates, which is it looks for vendors and it provides funding and the vendor does his thing and they manage that. But with the city literally driving it. Then it gets a lot easier. So that's really what would be required, I, I believe, to get this, and that's not how cities generally show up. They generally don't go for that level of accountability. They're not organized that way, but that would be what would be required.
Thank you, David. I think we're going to stop here. I appreciate the time you spent with us, answering our questions, making. Your, your presentation on what you're trying to do. And so unless there are any other questions or. Also clarification, I think. We need to move on to the next item on the.
Okay.
Thank you very much, David.
Good to meet you all. I wish you well.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing from you if there's a desire to move forward. Okay.
Thank you.
I know.
Bye. Alright, thank you. We're moving to the next agenda item, which is destination, destination electric, the EV fair. On June the third.
Cool, so. We have a updated deck, so. Dropped it from the last one. New background, so. So these updates are as of today.
Nice.
There is our logo.
Wow.
Destination Electric, salt is eating shovels. Uh, next slide. This is an updated layout. I have to stand up because I. Only did this a few times. Right, so you can just get an idea of EV displays still, booths, so it really hasn't changed from the last version you saw, but. Much cleaner. Fair case. Right space.
So there'd be one, there'd be two lines like that rather than being like a center. You know, kind of like a. Industry walkway with the cars on each side. You can have put the cars right behind each other.
I think it should be slightly angled. Give a space for that.
I'm trying to figure out on the map what we're seeing on top of the map, is that the?
Cars are blue, so just imagine those two degrees.
There will be a center walkway.
So that's the community center, right? So that's parking too. And then these are the EV chargers for the city. So which, the only thing I was saying is that. Would it be better to have some of the cars over there? Some of the cars over there and then people walk between the cars like this instead of having to go through a line of car to go to the next one. I'm just, don't know if that would. Actually be more practical, if it can be equipped.
It's a pretty big.
Yeah, I know, I know the parking lot is big, but the way it's set up this way, I just don't know how it's going to work for people to go through the cars to get to the next car and so on.
There's going to be enough space in the middle to walk. One end to the other if you want, presumably, right?
Yes.
I think that's what you were. Asking for.
Yeah, but then what I was asking, I mean, what I was wondering is what. More practical to move this line of car on the other side over there. Have the walkway over there and then you have on the left side, the line of car, on the right side, the line of car.
I think, I think we should trust the people who are planning this. Looks fun, means a big lot.
I'm just asking the question that.
I don't think part of it is just reduce the amount of parking available to them.
Yeah, to the. Yeah, we got approved for this site plan already, so I think it's too late to make those changes, but it's. You know, we're going to fill this, this event out and. You know. There's one next year and we can, you know, make some changes. Keeps it together.
There's kind of one line where you walk.
Yeah.
Through the cars and then to the booths.
Yeah, it's a lot bigger than. Those boys are also the size of a parking stall. It's like a little bit bigger than.
I just would advise that there is enough space between the cars so that people can move around.
Fair angle, they'll probably be.
This has not changed. This is the same as last time, but just for reference, those are all still true.
And you have all your volunteers, right? For the booth, our commissions.
It's not a contest, but that, but I know we are thirty four hundred, if there's, if there's talent. If we're in charge, so. I don't have a number to say how many we have right now, but. We, I know. We know what number we're going for. Next slide. So, hopefully a couple of things have changed here from the last time you saw this. Kana is taken off. As well as the other one that I am blanking on, Casey or Tanya, if you remember. And in their place, we have a custom seat breaker conversion and a Jaguar, this has been added. Okay, yeah. Thanks. Pair Power ultimately. Wasn't able to do it for this event and we did decide to have common building electric stations sort of covered in. The boots that. Have that capacity already. So like SPC, so. That's, that's, that's the update there. And then, but we've also added a couple more. E-bike vendors that will be on display, Cooper and Pedico. This list on the left is, was the same as last time, but just as an example of one of the things that has gone out, this inclusion in the Los Altos History Museum. Newsletter, something that has gone there. Do you want to go to the next slide? You can see the page up on commission section. As well as version of the. Window. Poster for the event, and there's also banners of similar design. Design to take care of now.
And that, and that would be a point exactly before, how long before the prepared set?
I think you're starting this week, next week.
We should get, yeah. We should get the final version of the flyer printed out for the end of this week.
And then the flyers would be, how, how are you going to use the flyers? They'd be the. Businesses or are you going to have, suddenly, we're going to receive one that were mailed box, so how is it going to work?
Definitely going to be window cards and businesses and. Flyers are more kind of had different merchants or at the libraries. Kind of at, at certain locations where they can be distributed. And there'll obviously also be posters that some of the cities covered spaces around, covered cases around town, around town.
Can, can we do a, a bailing of the flies? Like all the mailboxes, is that something doable or not? Yeah, go ahead.
I personally, I think as the environmental commissioner. Put that much paper and, and it's not cheap. To turn family to the entire city and it takes time, so probably by the time it happened, it would be. A little bit, but. But I just don't have the idea. Producing that much paper.
Let's recycle.
To that point, banners, discussions about repurposing it for next year, potentially the only thing that would be changed then possibly is the location and date that can be covered up, so. That's another.
Yeah.
Sustainability measure, basis of promotion. Next slide, I think this is.
I like the design.
Yeah, this is really nice. I like the, I like the logo too.
That's the city picture.
Yeah.
In terms of food materials, we, we had discussed a QR code for the resource, guide for building electrification as well as climate action plan. We discussed also the what can do now. Currently, this links to the, the webpage that then has both of those PDFs. I learned this press that there's parts of the QR code that you can cover up and it still works. So anyway. So yeah, that's, that's what we can have. If there's anything else people want, I know we are able to have a table sheet already with the city logo. So that's not something we have to worry about. It was just going for a very simple design to the point, the resources there.
And what with this, and then just we answer questions basically.
Right. Fine, so then we discussed mission booth time before and. Public news back, I'd asked for, certainly, for Shina, you're the one, I couldn't remember if you had said whether you were available that day.
I am available that day. I had to, that's the day I think I had to leave early, so.
Okay, so I should want to start with you. Was there a particular time if you were to take an hour slot during mission that you would. Want to go?
I think Dawn's listed twice if Dawn would like to.
So, so yeah, I, I.
Okay, whatever time.
Okay. I'm going to start reporting this last meeting. Bruno, you were, you were willing to do all four hours, basically.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be a wrong.
So this, this was my attempt to, to split it up based on when, when you all said that you were available.
Yeah.
So. If, if that, if that looks alright. Everybody, then. And then I, 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 like I said before, I imagine I'd be available at some point to, to stuff like, if, if not for half an hour, an hour, I can handle stuff.
With the timing from twelve to two.
Awesome. I think that's it. That's the last one.
Great. Looking forward to it to come. I can wait.
Yeah.
I want to be. Yeah, try to. My spare time. Okay, do we have any comments from the public on the EV fair? Thank you.
And is your list of cars that are coming pretty much set?
We, that's, I don't recall if we have any spots left.
Yeah, I think we're pretty much now we're going to be. Do the.
Coming by, let's hear this.
Like a Polestar wasn't on the list, I think. Wondering there to Tesla.
Yeah. But they'll need to be at that one, so. Yeah, no, it's not, yeah. I mean, it's the first one, right?
It's, it's good.
If it's successful, I think. It's going to be a different story next year, and there will be more electric cars next year already, so. Alright. Yeah, well done.
Some of the fairs that recently have seen, do we have any vehicles that have the new power source? It's like the Ford truck there because I think what. Got a lot of interest in some of the fairs that I've seen is, you know, you you have one of those type of cars there and somebody's got. Some plugged into it and they're running it off the vehicle. Creates a lot of energy. From what I've seen on people.
So there is the fall and I think the Kia also is one like that, the EV six that they have on there. And Honda is that the basic, but I think you don't have any.
Partly they got dropped off.
Yeah.
I guess what the only comment that I'm making is is it's generated interest with people walking around that. They see something plugged into the car and they say, oh, my power goes out and I could still run my induction cooktop or whatever.
Yeah, there was some discussion. I can't remember where we landed on it, but there was some discussion about possibly having some display in that regard. One thing I did leave out the presentation is we also have a couple of the drivers are bringing electric plants given. So just other feature good to show.
Good. Let's move on to the the other mention commission work plan, starting with an update on the reach codes.
I'd like to preface this with I'm I'm not a lawyer. See that and so essentially, which I'm sure you all know on April eleventh, what we. Had City Council vote to move forward with updated reach codes. And the next step was for it to be adopted on April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, but. On May seventeenth, twenty twenty three, a panel of the Ninth Circuit Court ruled against Berkeley. For their gas ban ordinance, so. To kind of understand and further investigate. The Building Decarb Coalition commissioned legal analysis and. We as a city have decided to put a pause on the adoption of the reach codes that were introduced on April eleventh and until more. So until more information is gathered. And S V C E will continue to provide updates to all the jurisdictions as the information develops. And as will the city attorney. City Attorney's Office will keep us updated. So that's kind of where we're at right now with that.
I have some questions you may not be able to answer these few. You know. But so it doesn't affect the previous adopted reach codes. Like the rich code that we had from three years ago about on hold. They're still being enforced right now. Then my second question is. The cities that adopted new reach codes and as of January two thousand twenty three, are they putting a hold on those new reach codes? Like similar to ours, for example. Do we know that?
Considerably adopted. There's I don't believe I've been put a hold on. The reach codes according to S V C. There. There are some in California that help, but.
And. All right, so. Do we have a timeline from? The city in terms of. When is the city going to reach a decision whether to pass the reach codes or not to do it based on? Whatever.
The information that we've been given is.
So I just wanted to clarify that the Berkeley gas ban was a municipal. It's different than our ordinance, which is a building code ordinance. Trying to make sure everybody understands that. And hopefully determination will be that. As we have building codes for many other things that can continue to have. Building. Code for a reach code, so that would be. You know. I I will be optimistic that that will be determined to be the legal analysis.
Council member Pete, did you have something to say? Ready to make a.
No, I think I I think Laura said everything very well. There isn't a timeline yet. We'd all like to have one. But there are a lot of legal experts looking at this and some cities continue continue to enforce. Either legacy ordinances or ones that are recently adopted and some cities have chosen to wait. We are. You know, in one of the. Intermediate sort of situations where we're gonna just wait to do the final reading and adoption. I can't say. I I can't even say any more than that because the city attorney is is actually not prepared to 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 really opine yet either. Everybody's still gathering a lot of information.
All right, so we'll have to wait. And hopefully it's gonna be positive.
I I will say this, that it it it's really unfortunate that a legacy federal statute that is decades old. You know, should be. Used to 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 block. Environmental policy. And it's also apparently in contravention of how the Department of Energy interprets its own rule, so. You know, this is not an official opinion. This is my personal opinion from reading as much as I can about it. I'm cautiously optimistic. I don't think that the the Ninth Circuit's. Decision is necessarily gonna stand. There's a lot of avenues around it. Some people have talked about our state simply asking for a waiver from the Department of Energy. Or at least there was some Twitter traffic about that, may or may not have been originated by somebody on this Zoom call.
Have we heard one way or another is the city of Berkeley and and their. My understanding is there's other states and things that are. Parties to the Berkeley action and and are they they planning on the. Filing a review of this? Do we know on appeal?
I I don't know what. Any other jurisdiction plans to do with regard to 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 legal filings? I do think Berkeley is continuing to enforce. Their their ordinance, but that. That's in the public domain. I think there have been articles that have said that. I haven't personally talked to anybody there about it.
Anything else on this? There's nothing much. It's just information or it's just we just have to wait at this stage and hope for the best. All right, next item, the tree protection ordinance. Comments? Oh, yes. Do we have any public comments on this agenda item, the reach codes and? What's happening from the legal on the legal side? No. Okay. Tree protection ordinance. We should be getting closer to. Having some kind of a draft.
Yeah, so essentially the consultant is still working on the deliverables and. They're gonna be providing their policy recommendations. By being twelve, which is. End of this week. And those are supposed to help us inform the tree protection ordinance and then we need to meet with development services. And discuss next steps and then. We can then develop like a more definitive timeline before meeting with the subcommittee and then.
So we we. I mean, are we are we looking at having something coming back to the commission or coming back coming to the commission before the summer?
I think originally we had planned for September. We get September to bring the council.
September to council.
Yeah, we're we're planning to meet next week internally to to hopefully set more of a draft timeline going forward and look at the constantly. So hopefully we'll have more answers on that, but. I guess May, if it's May and May is before summer, so.
And then the question mark is, do we still have twelve meetings a month? That's another thing we had talked about later, but. So there is no June meeting set on the on the on the commission page right now. But if you look at the commission page, there is no meeting for June. That's on the commission page right now.
Yeah, we haven't created that yet.
Okay.
It'll probably start to create.
It's about June and July.
But yeah, I think we're we're trying to get it. At least in. As soon as or get it to council in Q one fiscal year. But, yeah, we can we'll we'll have more a more definitive timeline. And hoping that it will move more quickly after that.
I'm just. Worried that we don't have that many meetings before that goes to potentially goes to council, so. We just need to. Make sure that we squeeze it in either in June. Maybe July, but July is, you know, summer, July, August is already more challenging sometimes. So, I mean. I don't know if you can be ready by June, by the June meeting. In the fall from that to go to the commission.
I don't think.
It doesn't have to be something kind of in a very advanced draft form. It can be some. Ideas that have been brought by the consultant.
He definitely wanted me with the subcommittee.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I just I just worried that we don't have that meeting. I mean, if you're looking at going to the council in September, which is that. That many meetings left.
Well, that's a goal, but if we we want to meet with the commission before going there. We're going to council, so we'll make sure to meet with the commission and then.
What I what I'm saying is I I think it's a good idea to go to council in September. We need to work something with the commission in between. That's what I said. I don't want to push the date. You know, if you if we can get it to council in September, great. I don't want it to push it to October because we don't have time to review it. So I want to make I want to make sure that. We will have time to review it before the September meeting. That's what I'm saying. Let's let's make sure that happens. Yeah. All right. Do we have any public comments on this section on this agenda item? I mean, unless you you have other comments and questions, but. No comments. Public comments, no comments, okay. Other work plan items. So we didn't put the M window because it's still being. Revised and so on, so there is no point in discussing anything about M window until we have revised all the bits. Draft, I'll be back.
So. Question about that, Tommy and Casey. You guys were working on researching. What we already have, but also what other jurisdictions are doing, kind of data, gather data. While he wait for the.
Any, I mean, I think we've covered pretty much everything we had on the work plan today, so. Different forms. I think I need to ask for public comments because it's empty fine, but. We'll do teleconferencing, teleconferencing guidelines.
Did you want me to go over?
Yeah. In the words within the package about that.
Missures can now participate be a teleconference. In accordance with either the Brown Act or eighty two four nine. And you can choose based on your circumstance at each time you need to teleconference. But if you choose to go with, let's say, AB two four four nine. You must have a just cause. Or emergency circumstance, which I defined in the staff report. And. You do not. So the main difference between the Brown Act and eighty two four four nine is that you. With eighty two four four nine, you do have to have a just cause, but you do not have to list your location. Whereas with the Brown Act. You do. So. So with the traditional Brown Act, for example, if you were for business or on a vacation or. What have you? You would be able to attend virtually, but you have to post your location. Again, if you don't want to post your location with maybe two four four nine, or you need to have. A just cause or an emergency circumstance.
And these are. These are the ones that you listed there. That's that's it.
And in the location, does that need to be a public? It's public access. Before the Brown Act version. If you're in home, then somebody shows up, you have to.
But it's only if you don't have a just cause or an emergency situation.
You know, if you're if it's not one of the.
Yeah, if it's not one of the ones listed there.
Whatever reason you choose to take the call from home. You can just list, you have to list your address if someone comes there.
Yes.
Doesn't have to be a public place.
So how do we define as commissions travel while on business of the legislative body? Or another state or local agency? I mean, it doesn't apply to us, but I'm like. Right?
As we're going to a climate change conference.
Maybe, yeah.
Or the city of Los Angeles. When when they happen.
All right, any questions?
I just wanted to highlight again that. So members can only participate in a teleconference, no more than twenty percent of meetings in the calendar year. Regardless of whether what provision you utilize.
So that'd be one meeting per.
Like it's still twelve meetings per year, it'll be two meetings per year, right?
Yeah, sorry.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Do we have any idea of what the audio requirements are in terms of? Like, can you could you wear headphones remotely? Because it's similar to that stipulation of that and because I'm just imagining if you're in a public place. Or in the meeting. Would you would you then then have to broadcast it to people who actually don't even want to be in the meeting but are present in that public space?
You know, like it would be for people attending. Like the meeting, who come to attend the meeting in that public place.
So the hope then would be that it's a public place that has some cornered off audio, I would imagine, but. I just. Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I'm asking because in particular, I tightened up them already, but just I am. Being asked to not to to be. I'm asked being asked to be somewhere else other than the the county for the next meeting during that time, so. You know, if there's any concern that anybody else would also be remote, we wouldn't reach for it. Just say that while I can. I'm still flexible, but that's. Possibility.
Yeah, and. Mr. Benny springs up a good point is that. All meetings have to have a majority of members present in the physical meeting location. I'm sure Sammy Springs up a good point is that all meetings, uh, had to have a majority of members present in the physical meeting location.
Okay, so if you have. Like, less than basically three members physically present, you can't have a meeting. You need to have it for physically present to. Even if you have two that are.
All of our questions, what to, is there a requirement? For, uh, identity or verification that. We're going, we would be participating. Is there a certain amount of time beforehand? We just show up virtually, how's that work?
We have not shared the location ahead of time.
Yeah, you, I think you would have to let us know so that we can post on the agenda, so then it would be. Minimum seventy-two hours in advance.
Sick, anyway, that's, that's fine, we'll figure that out as we go.
So, just, uh. The, the table that summarizes requirements between AB two forty, uh, two four four nine and the Brown Act. Is one. Take a look at, I mean, specifically, we were talking about twenty percent of meetings that only applies to AB two four four nine. Doesn't apply to the Brown Act, according to the Brown, there is no limit on how many meetings you can attend. By zoom. There's only a limited under the twenty-four forty-nine.
You know, the, um, commission handbook states that. Twenty percent regardless of what you're. Regardless if you use the Brown Act or.
So what it says on the table.
Yeah, so I think so, this is just highlighting the differences and the handbook is being more strict in saying. That this is the requirement for Los Altos.
Okay, so the, the, the handbook, the commissioner's handbook goes beyond the Brown Act in terms of requirements.
Then is it twenty percent? Brown Act teleconferencing? And then twenty percent AB two four four nine teleconferencing? Or is it total twenty percent? Total twenty percent, okay, so. Okay, so it's not, you know, for this reason.
Yeah, okay.
And, um. Don't imagine I send out emails to all commissioners. Work, uh, that has more information and I could resend that PDF to everyone.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
More detail.
That's probably used.
Just table is from, it's from that, yeah.
Yeah, but I think it's misleading based on what you're telling me, right? So I think we need to be careful about that.
I guess, is there a. That's from number of meetings a commissioner can miss? Not be physically present or. As I'd be at a conference.
I think it's, it's in the handbook too, I think.
Yeah, I just see that handbook.
And I think it's, uh. I don't remember the exact number though. But it's not a huge number, actually.
Three.
It's a three.
I remember.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I can look, look at that.
Yeah, it's certainly a good job.
Read per year.
Like three or four per year maximum.
Uh, seventy-five, seventy-five percent of the regular scheduled meetings annually.
Please for meetings. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Four is a quarter of, uh, yeah, seventy-five percent, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Um, one more request. Is it possible to have like a meeting notice sent to the commissioners? And we put a, a brief playbook opening it on the calendar and finding like, good to have that actual meeting come up. Calendar invite. A calendar invite.
Okay, once, once you post. It should maybe, yeah, calendar invite would be used. Any other questions? Good. I don't think we need to ask for public comments for that, right? It's not, but.
It's possibly comment for every.
Okay, so let's see if we have any public comments for the teleconferencing guidelines then.
So we have some comments from. This member Dealey in the chat, that's. He's suggesting that, um. If you're gonna, if you're going to, um, think you're gonna be remote, you should let staff know as soon as you can. So let's go down, there's other, other comments.
All right, um. See the staff updates?
Uh, so we have our compost event in April. And we were fully booked with appointments and, um. We. So we had a good turnout and we were able to. Give out compost half of my pile that we ordered, um. But, uh. Residents were happy that, you know, we had it again and, um, we're looking into, uh. We're figuring out when our next date is, we're still figuring, figuring out some logistical stuff. Um. And hopefully to continue that model that we have, the self-serve giveaway. In, in June and going forward.
So when I go by, I keep, um, I go by the, the Santos Hills Compost pile, that's the corner there by the highway. And people come and. They just bring their bags and they fill up their bags and they take the compost, it's just like, anybody can do it, it's not just. Probably to see the presidents that are doing it. Is there any chance we can? Do that at some point? I mean, I know we don't have the same space as Los Santos Hills has and, you know, it's the. And I'm just wondering, if a self-serve kind of permanent type of compost.
Yeah, we're. We're exploring that, um. So maybe, but here. We don't, we don't know right now, we're still trying to figure it out and. Um, it's the space is hard to find. Uh, there's a lot of, a lot of factors, um, in keeping compost out when it rains and so. Uh, there's a lot of logistics to figure out and so, so maybe. But, uh. We're, we'll hopefully know. Um, more this month.
But they do have to show their. Self-hills.
No, no, no.
They don't.
You know.
Anybody?
Yeah.
But this.
It's a, it's a, it's a corner of two streets.
But this sort of come out from our budget, right? From the city. To have the compost ready for residents.
We, we contract with MTWSC compost. Um, so. If we, I think it's more about logistics of having a. Like all year round compost pile.
Okay. As a maintenance worker, well, it would be less involved right now, it's, it was not like last two years, you bag them and everything. Make it really nice.
Yeah, the bagging is, yeah, it's been up, you know, would come up.
There's staff time, but, but all the.
There's staff time.
Yeah. If you're a self-serve type of composting thing, as long as, you know, obviously there are some logistics around it, covering it when it grinds or whatever, making sure it's refilled on a regular basis, but. I'm guessing it would use a lot less staff time. And, and probably would make it easier for the community, actually, if you could use that compost, you don't have to make a reservation, you don't have to show up for the one day. Month or whatever it is, right? You just go, you need your compost, you go, you pack it up, you take it all. Anyway, so, so if you're looking into that, that's great. Any other updates?
Right, an update on the household hazardous waste event that we had in Los Altos on Eagle Creek Street. Um, the county collected seven hundred and twenty-four loads at the event. Four hundred and thirty-eight of those were for residents of Los Altos. They said that was very impressive. Um, and it was a very successful event and residents came up and said thank you to them. So yeah, it worked out well. See, start kind of planning something for next year.
That's it?
All right. I have one question, uh, for staff, uh. And I don't know if it was a, a state senate bill or, or something else that, uh. It was encouraging expediting of solar and. Uh, solar panels and heat pump installation permit. And I know from, uh, Silicon Valley Clean Energy was offering a. Sort of like to reach codes that were offered to somebody. To, uh, develop that within the city. I was just wondering if the staff had any update on that because I, I know the city applied for and. I believe received, I don't know if they received, but applied for, uh. The, the funding to put in place and expedited permitting. Uh, process for solar panels and heat pumps, I was just wondering if you had any update on that.
Uh, yes, we did apply for that and we're, um. We're working, uh, we're working on the steps of that process, so hopefully getting those, those funds.
Is that something that staff is gonna do, or is that something that they come to the, the commission for comment or view or?
For the solar?
For the expedited, uh, permitting application. I'm just, I'm just sort of asking a leading question about the process that you made me go.
Yeah, so, so creating that. That process is, is, is something that the development services will be working on.
Can I? I guess a little bit, just to provide some, I mean, so yes, what you're referring to is a bill that was passed in Sacramento at the beginning of this year, at the end of last year, which has to do with online. An online committing process system that has to be implemented by all cities in California.
It's by a future, by a future date, but I think.
Exactly, two thousand twenty-four.
Providing some seed money to get it going quicker.
Right. So it's supposed to be like, I think in two thousand twenty-four, there is, I don't exactly when two thousand twenty-four is the implementation date for that, that cities have to have an online committing process for some of that, those, um.
Not impressed, I think we're later.
It were later, because it's size of, size of community.
Yeah, it depends on the size of the city, yeah, so I don't know exactly for Los Santos, what it would be, um, doesn't mean we can't do it earlier. Obviously, we have, especially if we have some money for it. Uh, because the idea is to accelerate committing process, make it easier for people to, to do that, so.
Perhaps, you're expressing interest that if the commission can be helpful, or yeah.
Maybe the better way of phrasing it is if you could up. Update what, what your process may be so that the commission knows whether or not that we will be involved in that process.
Well, we have a, as an agenda item, reviewing the committing process in Los Santos for everything electric, including solar panels, batteries, heat pumps, you name it. Uh, and that's kind of an open agenda item, that's something we would like to do as a commission, probably at some point, have a good review of what's happening in Los Santos and. Maybe, you know, if the time is right, we can have the discussion around the online committing process as well, but. You guys have to be ready to. To have that discussion, so.
Yeah, we can, we can provide that feedbacking. One condition. I think right now we're just on the, the grant phase. Want, we want to make sure we get that.
Okay. All the more city staff updates, we can move on to the. Next item on the agenda, which is the commissioner's report and comments and. I know, uh, Shao Ping, I asked you to, uh, report of the, the Lehigh discussions.
Yeah. Okay, okay, uh, what I heard. So, uh, Justin Manion called town hall meeting, um, April twenty-sixth. And he has invited all the, you know, district five cities, represented elected officials. And I think that they, um. Our city, our mayor, Sal Matos, and they, they, and both of them present. And, uh, Covetino City was gracious enough to offer their senior. Conference room for this town hall meeting, I think it's sort of a city, the central, central location for all the neighboring city, you know, especially. You know, people. Up to work, they can attend it. And, uh, so. Basically, uh, the goal for, uh, Senator County is that, uh. The Lehigh cement plant can permanently stop operation. And, uh. The quarry will stop mining permanently. And also the reclamation plan, uh, you know, needs to really have, have a sound plan in place and then. That they can, uh, you know, really working towards, uh, you know, restore. The site they have been mining for the last seventeen years. So, uh, in the last ten years, uh, this is starting from two thousand twelve. There has been over twenty-one hundred violations. In terms of dust, uh, air pollution, water, um. Um, they, they have called that date also, I think all their, uh, environment. Uh, monitoring, uh, agency representative were also present, so they could, uh, you know, just, uh. At a state, uh, their findings, what they had been monitoring. Um, and I think the, uh, the deputy counsel to the, uh, to the, to the county. She was also present there to answer any kind of legal related, uh, questions. So I think that, um, as far as the cement. Making operation, Lehigh has stopped, uh, in November twenty twenty-two. They have some. Issues with their cube. I think, uh, the structure, the idea was some defect and, uh. It would be, it would not be okay to operate that, so I think. At least the cement making operation now is, it's not. You know, it's stopped, but it's not permanent, so the goal, you know, for the county is really for that to stop. And as far as the quarry, quarrying activity. The cement quarry, which is the, uh, you know, they're looking for, uh, this. Active material, um. Is the limestone. So the limestone quarry, they have stopped. But all the other things, because when they mine that hillside. A lot of things comes off. So limestone is just one component, but they have all these other. Um, they call aggregate rocks, they still selling those, so you see trucks, loads. Looking for, as you know, on Stevens Creek Canyon Highway all day long, basically, they still produce air dust. Pollutions and also they have a kind of, I think they call sediment. Uh, kind of water area that, uh, they collected, you know, their, their water coming out. Mining activity, I think that's also that, that particular water area they're looking, you know, to. I think the water bore is kind of looking into maybes, they could utilize it someday, but. They have weighing all person come, they decided not to utilize it, so I think that, um. Right now, I think all the legal things are in work that they, they want. Right now, I think all the legal things are in work that they, they want that, you know, they're, they just don't mind anymore. When they're making cement. Lehigh still owns the land, so people have questions about. You know, the. Acquisition. You know, when the county has a plan. Obviously, the funding and all that, and also, you know, has the high. Offer any kind of price that they're willing to sell so that they move out from to see her, they're completing. And Joe kind of visited their headquarters, which is in Texas. Two months ago. But his goal is, hasn't really been. The acquisition part, he just doesn't want them to continue operating. Yeah.
So he wants them to close everything.
That's right.
Necessarily buy it.
And also the restoration plan.
I've.
Yeah, they have to have that submitted to the planning department for the county to review. And. I think the revised reclamation plan will be ready in the next two months. And. The dust particle pollution, they're going to impose. A much stricter ordinance. Like I said, you know, those kind of aggregate rock is still, is still actively. Operated, yeah, right now, daily basis.
I buy there too, I see the trucks.
Yeah.
That good.
No. Yeah. You know, our city quality definitely also don't affect it. Whatever the water, you know, if they dump, I think, I think. Maybe in like twenty twenty-one, maybe twenty twenty-two, there were some five million gallons of water. That. Flowing to the permanent creek, so I think the water bore heavy monitoring what that impact's going to be on the groundwater per se.
Thank you, so, but the, the, the plan right now is not for the county to necessarily buy the land. But for the, for Lehigh to decide to shut down the quarry and then do the restoration work.
That's right.
So this. On, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what you're actually actively.
And supervisors, many, it's first goal is to get them to commit and writing not to do any more. Some effort, I think that's step one, and then he'll probably go on to that next thing, which is, alright, now we got to monitor. The aggregate, the sound back. Purchase of that, because he had. About that early.
Yeah.
Restoration of the. The site at some point.
You know, considering twenty nineteen, we had even set me a plan to expand the operation. And they want further. They want further height on the, you know, I think they want certain kind of height. They're able to, yeah, so the county had been working with a meat pen. Able to block that because they haven't really addressed all their violations, you know. People ask questions, have they been fined for all those violations over the years? I think the answer was no, because usually when there was cited, they need to be given. Some time to correct your action before the fine can be imposed.
Right.
But I think. It was kind of last, you know, over the years. Where they have been. But anyway, I think their, their expansion plan was suspended, no more. And, yeah. At least that. That's all.
Thank you. Alright, any other reports, so there was a. So you were the, okay, so.
Tomorrow night.
Five nine, you were at the five nine.
Yeah, the city council meeting.
Yeah. Then by the five twenty-three, I'm moving, I'm just speaking, who was the sound to the, the April meetings?
And can, speaking of tomorrow's city council meeting, the gas.
Yes.
Enforcement is on the agenda.
Okay, I have a, I have to report, I'm going to report on the April twenty-five city council meeting. Because the bigger agenda item for us there was the discussion about the commissions. So I. Actually made a public comment for that particular agenda item, which is about the commissioners reinforcing the fact that we as a commission. Wanted to stay at twelve meetings a year, and that's seven members of the commission, because obviously there are discussions, there were discussions and there were. Proposals to reduce the number of commissioners of the, our commission to five. And the number of meetings to six a year. So there were a lot of discussions at the council for that, around that. Just a reminder, we met twelve times last year. And I don't think, you know, we, we met less than ten or eleven times, sometimes there is a meeting that's cancelled, so there's, you know, and then. You know, we have a lot of, you know, plate and then suddenly we need all these meetings to be able to go through all of this. And then in terms of the number of commissioners, reducing the number from seven to five again, you know, I. Suggested that we should not touch the commission. Some other. People made comments about the number of meetings and the number of commissioners for each commission. For their own commission or for commission, they've been on or in general, people making comments. And I think, you know, I think there was also a comment made about the fact that commissions. At the link for the, the link, the councils link to the community and then reducing the number of commissioners of commission is not necessarily helping with that, it's a. We were presenting the community in general at, at the city government level, so I think. There was a comment made about that, there are comments that were made about. Other practical issues with regards to being five, those seven. So I think the, there was no final decisions made. There was obviously presentations made, suggestions made to the council, but the council did not make any final decision, the council suggested. Send it back to staff to come back with a final proposal for the commissions. There are some things that have been already approved, like there will be. Some, some commissions will be put together, the park and recreation commission will be combined with. Arts and. So the library, no, but the, I think another one, I think arts and other than that. So just arts. And the library and there was the history museum, there was the library commission also.
So, yeah, I mean.
I mean, I don't know exactly.
Design review got taken away.
Yeah, there's a, what's black is now part of the planning commission, yeah.
Yeah, basically, yeah. Arts and. Parks were combined. I don't think, yeah, but.
So the planning commission, they're not touching it, they're not touching the youth commission, they're not touching the.
Us.
Senior commission.
Yeah, us and complete streets, I think we're the ones that.
Yeah.
Propose for most change.
Thank you.
And that they asked staff to come back with a kind of final, after giving input. After the council gave input, they. Asked staff to come back with a kind of final.
And then, so in addition to the. Number of commissioners on the commission, the number of meetings that were so. For the definition of the roles and responsibilities that we put together by staff and presented to the council. There again, there again, our council made some suggestions to make some slight modifications to what was proposed. And I think in terms of the number of meetings and the number of commissioners on the commission, I think the directions given, the direct, my understanding. You can correct me if I was wrong. Is that council gave direction to staff that the number of commissioners of the commission stayed, it's for the run to commissions into seven and the number of meetings stay, stay at twelve. That was my understanding of the direction that was given to staff. You got the same?
Wasn't, it wasn't.
Well, it wasn't a hundred, but there was a.
I think that was the general discussion, yeah.
We will see, so I don't know when there's the next meeting about the commissions, but.
Yeah, I think they're bringing that back on May twenty-third. And then the other topic that they said needs to be discussed around commissions and hasn't yet, it's subcommittees, the Houston subcommittees.
Yes.
That will be.
There was a big question mark around the subcommittees. Which I don't know if it's going to be discussed at the twenty-third meeting, that's something that's coming back, but. I mean, there is also a lot of, not everybody on the council, they don't have all of the same opinion about things, I think so.
It was because subcommittees at that, that last.
That, that last meeting, no.
Sure, I'm not sure.
So. May twenty, May the twenty-third, that would be the next meeting, so I would strongly urge you to. Read the packet that goes into that meeting, as, 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 you know, at least the commissions, the commissions at that agenda. And. You know, I definitely would do that, probably, I make sure, I think I'm assigned to that. I'm assigned to that council meeting anyway, so I'd be there. And then we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Did the commission want to assign the?
Yes, we should assign the two meetings.
The next one in June is June ninth and then June twenty-third.
Who wants to take June ninth?
June ninth. Okay, June twelve.
June twelve.
June six.
No, the.
Days six.
Thirteen.
Forty-seven.
Yeah, thirteen, sorry. Thirteen.
Tuesdays, right.
Yeah.
I'll take the thirteenth.
Okay, done. Thirteen, the twenty-seven?
I haven't taken one in a while, but I'll be traveling the twenty-seventh. Be up first, what?
Oh, let's see.
I could do that, so let's not go.
Yeah, I can swap with you.
Okay, so I'll take the thirteenth.
Okay, so Rashina for the thirteen and then for the twenty-seventh. The June thirteen meeting Rashina will be attending and then the June twenty-seven is going to be done. Okay. Central future agenda items to be. Suggestions, so what, right now, what we have based on the. It's the permitting process, what, what we were talking about, permitting process in Los Santos for heat pump, solar panels and battery storage. So, you know, suddenly, when, when you guys are ready, it'd be nice to have. Either it's you or someone else from the city making a presentation about the process right now, so we can take a look at that. We have gas powered leaf blow. Blow ban, but I think that's, we'll have to see what happens tomorrow, right, so I'm not sure it's necessarily great to go back to the commission, but.
I wouldn't think it would.
Yeah.
But, yeah. Do an update.
And we have the shoulder improvement policy, that's one thing that at some point we should take a look at also. And then I'm still trying to work with ABC to see when they will be ready to make a presentation on their pilot. The tariff on being pilot, so. Fortunately, they keep on pushing it, I think they're just. Working on the details and the budget and all that stuff, so they're not quite ready yet, so I'm not sure they're going to be ready before the summer, we'll have to see. It's, it's been delayed, any other agenda items that you want to have? At future meetings? So. Do you think of something, just send an email to Daniel Casey? We mentioned items, suggestions. And then we can put them. Alright, I think that was the last one.
I guess I really couldn't ask, about the change. On the number of commissioners within the. Frequency of meeting is going to be next fiscal year, the change.
If they make any change, what they've said, if they make any changes to the number of commissioners on the commission is as commission, commissioners and their. They will be replaced.
I see.
That's the way they've been doing. Okay. Any other questions, so? Need to discuss, okay, so. I joined the meeting at about nine twenty-seven. Thank you.